We'll get you a new one, I'm sorry.
That's okay, we can put it over there.
Yeah, put it on the side.
Tony, 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 I swear.
Can't do it.
The minutia gets in the way sometimes.
You're supposed to say, Robert will get you a new one.
What did I mess up?
Well, I see the volume's good.
We don't have a sign-in sheet for January.
Oh. That's because I thought 2020 was the year that would never end.
Please, it feels like it.
And I think he would've killed me. When we met in January.
Yes.
It would've totally been my fault.
He's gonna come in here. But that's okay, that's right, we can just sign in January down there.
Yeah, I just filled in the bottom there. Plus, he has a record of it, it's recorded.
Did you fill in the bottom?
I just put it in the very bottom space there and then he'll have a record of it.
Sandy Garner getting all the parts correct, they may get something done now.
Say what?
Neil, can you hear us?
I love both of them, but. I've known both of them since. They should be able to hear you.
Yes, yes, Karen, I can hear you, sir, I was on mute and I was trying to figure out how to get there.
Oh, okay. Can you look at your phone?
Yes, I can.
Did you see Cece? Did you see Nancy?
This was at 3:30 today.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, not.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, they got two.
Yeah, y'all need one?
That's everybody.
No, we've got one.
Isn't that crazy? You know, you know, Kitty, don't you? She's awesome. She's awesome.
Just heads up to everyone, we're live.
Ace is gonna be remote and, yeah, and Neil, that's it, yeah. Ace usually gets here at 5:29.
I can see Ace on the screen. Yeah, he's.
I'm there. Hey, Ace.
Hey, guys.
Hey, Ace.
Hey, buddy.
Excuse me. If you guys see me fall backwards, it's because I'm test-driving a new stool here at my desk.
Can you hear him? Okay.
Yeah.
He's coughing like he's got the wrong one.
Have you said or not?
We don't have any things for this, right?
Yeah.
Is the audio okay in the council chambers?
I think Cheryl and who's at the end said she can hear you okay. We'll keep checking. Think it'd be better up there?
I'm wondering if they'd be better if we set them up here.
If I touch something, it'll break.
How about now?
We can hear you.
Okay.
Wait for the thing to go at 5:30. I guess we go ahead and start. All right, I have 5:30, so I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And the first item, I'd like everyone to join me in the Pledge of Legions, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and justice for all.
Before we start, Robert, do we have anybody online besides the two planning board members?
I have Mason Barnes on and I believe Nancy Fay is on.
Okay, and if anybody else joins, would you just let us know? Because I assume they might want to speak.
Will do.
And then for the folks, I guess you're the audience, but we do have two planning board members who are online, so all seven members are in attendance. First item of business is the approval of the minutes from the planning board meeting, which was November 10. But our minutes say November 9. And I believe it was the 9th, wasn't it? It was the 10th?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to correct the minutes and say that it was November 10, if we could. Is there any other corrections to the minutes of that meeting? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Leanne moved to approve, is there a second?
I'll second it.
David Culp seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Robert, that was unanimous. You don't want a roll call vote on this stuff, do you?
Not if it's 100%.
Okay. Next item of business is to approve the minutes from our December 1, 2020, regular planning board meeting. Does anybody have any comments, corrections, changes? That was kind of an easy meeting. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Karen made a motion to approve, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Cheryl seconded, Cheryl Cabala. All in favor, say aye.
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 That was unanimous, I believe. So our next item of business, new business agenda item A, consider a text amendment to 155.6.5.5A to change the existing conditional use minimum lot size in the C3 districts in cases of existing development. And I believe we'll hear from Tony first and then from the applicant.
Chairman Smith, members of the planning board. Again, this is a zoning text amendment that applies to the C3 commercial properties. I'll give you the locations of the C3. The landing is C3. 520 Causeway is C3. The Marina District, all of that is C3. The old Scotsman store on Salisbury Street is C3. Seapass parking lot and Seapass Marina are C3. So that's the areas. The proposed text amendment to 155.6.5.5A is going to change the existing conditional use minimum lot size from 10,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet except and unless property exists in a developed condition and is bordered by development property meets other criteria for the conditional use. Staff analysis, the proposed text amendment applied to properties only in the C3 district. It would give commercial property owners more flexibility on redeveloping existing properties. In this case, the text amendment will apply for the conditional use on parcel that is under 10,000 square feet, providing it's already developed. And you see in the middle page there, the definition of development there. This text amendment is consistent with our land use policy. Cameland Use Plan Regarding Land Use Sections 5, Page 8, Management Goals: Promote appropriate balance between private property rights, economic development, environmental protection, and community. The Land Use Plan goal is compatible with Section 4, I mean, 4 and Section 5 on Page 10. The town will encourage commercial establishments, providing basic goods and service to year-round residents and visitors. And it gives you some examples of where some of those could be. This meeting was advertised in the Star News on December the 24th, 2020. You have the attachment for the ordinance text amendment. In the ordinance itself, you have data in there for this text amendment. And it's actually ordinance number 2021-1819. And where that 10,000 square feet, we've done this in the past, especially in the C1 district. Most of those properties there, where the 10,000 square feet came from, I'm not sure. It, most of the lots at Raisel Beach in the C1 do not meet that. And several years ago, we had another applicant to reduce that in those areas. So this is what's, before you, if you got any questions for me, I'd be glad to try to answer those on this zoning text amendment.
Well, by the way, with one real quick, how many of the C3 properties are not 10,000 square feet right now, do you know?
I don't know, because some of those are like small lots and they've combined them.
Right.
I don't know the answer to those. We know this site is less than that.
Right.
But like I say, I don't think there's anything magic to the 10,000 square feet. Some of the lots in the C1 are, we know are 50 by 80 or 50 by 100. I would say, if you look at the Marina Street area, those, where the projects going for that four unit is probably more than 10,000. And again, some of those lots have never been combined. Let's say the parking lot in front of Bluewater, they could be 50 by 100 lots that have not been combined. So, but I don't have a number for those.
Okay.
Yeah.
Neil had a question. Sorry, I was muted. I have, I think, three questions. What's the significance of the bordering lots being developed? Why is that a?
I think that the petitioner came up with that. It probably goes with the property at 520 and it may only apply to 520. If you look at some of this information, when the applicant gets up here, their attorneys, maybe they can address that. That's just one way they address that for existing businesses.
Okay, and what's the difference between rehabilitate, maintain, and development? It would seem as if this building, I don't know, why is this being developed versus it's being maintained or rehabilitated? Are there differences in those words?
I think Neil, probably the applicant can address that question probably better than I could.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else for Tony right now?
What was the other property that you mentioned years back?
It was in the C1 district. Matt Nichols with South Beach Grill, that was one of those. Matt may have done it on two properties there. It did not, South Beach Grill didn't meet that minimal requirement. And I think in that, he actually reduced it down. Here, the applicant is not reducing it down to C3. He's basically saying, okay, it's, this is existing development. That's one, that's two different ways of doing it. But this is not changing it for all those from 10,000 square feet.
I do have one question for Tony.
Okay.
Did staff advise the applicant to approach it this way? I mean, was there a, was there a little bit of concern that the conditional use permit might not be acceptable if this change was not adapted?
No, we didn't have a lot of, I didn't have a lot of conversation. I'm not sure if anybody else did with the applicant, sometimes we do. We, you know, we looked at the request. Sometimes we get involved with it. I think this is just another way of doing it. And how, instead of reducing it down into all the C3s, this is one way of keeping the 10,000 square feet in there. And then again, I don't think the 10,000 square feet for Raisel Beach is anything magical. When we looked at this, we said that something has to be done with that. Or it says it has to be 10,000 square feet. And the applicant, this is what they came up with as far as the text.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure if this is a question for Tony or the applicants. This is about the space. Are we into the actual space yet, what the?
We're just dealing with the text.
I have a question. There was a CUP on the property as it existed.
No, no CUP. Talking about the property, we can, but it's been there since 1972, the building has. But no, there's no current CUP there. You typically don't see CUPs back in the 70s when this was built, so.
So it doesn't currently have a CUP?
It does not, no, it does not.
So to open it back up as it was?
Well, there's some changes there, so.
Okay, so that's what's driving this.
Changes and convenience.
So the building as it exists right now can't open back up as it was.
Well, it would depend on the type of use. So the applicant is looking at a different type of use, we believe.
Okay.
That's what I was getting to, that's what I was trying to.
But I almost feel like it's kind of.
Well, isn't it true, Tony, that since it's been closed and out of operation for a year, that it's almost like you have to start from scratch again?
Yeah, if it's, if it is having closed, I don't know, we didn't check on that. If it has been closed, we, when the business comes to us, we actually ask them to fill out a zoning application or zoning verification. We look at the use they do and then it's up to us, staff, to say, okay, where does this best fit? And then once we get into the CUP, you'll see why we chose this route here.
Okay.
A question for Tony. Tony, what was the most recent CUP for that lot?
It doesn't have one, Neil.
Did it ever have one?
No.
Okay, I misunderstood that, thank you.
No CUP.
Anything else for Tony? And of course, we can always ask him after we hear from the applicant as well. Okay, we'll hear, we'll hear from the applicant now. If you could, please state your name and address and all that good stuff, please.
Of course, my name is Jennifer Drapenter. I with Russ Bryan are here on behalf of the law offices of Grady Richardson. And we represent the applicant for both the text amendment and the CUP.
Is that a good time to pass these out?
Sure, yeah, we could do that now. This is the packet for the CUP application, it has the text amendment application in it as well. So we'll get more into that when we talk about the CUP.
Thank you.
Does anyone mind if I remove my mask to present?
I agree. Sir, they need those in, oh, how are we gonna get those to?
Robert can, once they get to the, they get the CUP, Robert can show some of the slides they have, that's probably some of this information.
That's in here?
Yes.
Okay.
So again, my name's Jennifer.
I'm sorry, did someone say something? Yeah, well, for Neil and Ace's benefit, they just handed us a really thick package of information. I don't know what it's going to be, but just let you know. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Sharon. So just to kind of clear up the history of the property, the reason there was no CUP before is because, again, like Mr. Wilson said, CUPs weren't really a thing in the 70s. And so what we have is what's called a non-conforming lot. And a non-conforming lot can stay that way as the ordinances change over time without requiring a CUP. But if you stop using the property, and I believe your ordinances say for a period of 365 days, then you lose that sort of grandfathered status. And then if you were to redevelop the property or change the use of the property, then you would have to comply with the ordinances and get a CUP in order to do the same thing that was being done in that building prior to that situation. So to address a couple of the questions that have been brought up by those that are remote, the language that the text amendment proposal encompasses in terms of developing the lot versus rehab and maintenance, the goal of that language was to restrict it as much as possible so that your ordinances weren't being affected other than with respect to this particular property. So by making this text amendment and using that developed language, it basically prevents other lots that are undeveloped that don't meet the 10,000 square foot minimum from being able to capitalize on that text amendment that we are asking you for. Because the lots that are adjacent to this property are already developed. And so there's no way for us to combine lots, for example, and meet that minimum should the board decide that that is the minimum they want to stick with or require. Of course, the text amendment could be written more broadly where it does away with the minimum 10,000 square foot amount. But that's, that's the reasoning behind why the language is the way it is. Because we were trying to tailor that language specifically to our needs and our property here without making it more broad than other properties would necessarily be able to jump on that and kind of get around the CUP minimum square foot requirements. I just wanted to point out that the lot, it is a non-conforming lot. It's 8,716 approximately square feet. So it is under the minimum, but it's always been used for the purpose for which we are intending to use it for the most part. We are not expanding the building footprint. And we're not enlarging the scope of the prior use. So like Ms. Cabala said, it's basically, this property fell through the cracks. It was operating without needing a CUP and then it was abandoned for over a year. And so now we've got to kind of start from scratch, as it were, to get, to get back to where it initially was. So that's, that's kind of the reason for the language in the text amendment and why we're requesting it. Because in order for us to apply for a CUP, we would need to have the text amendment in order to be able to do that. Otherwise, we're still non-conforming. Does anyone have any questions of me at this time?
I have several, but I think I can try to convince them. You said that you would, they registered that you, the applicants, were going to pretty much do what was already there. And I've always known it as a convenience store. Run in, get your drink, get your chips, whatever beer. But through going through all some paperwork and looking at the notice sign on the front, it's been referred to as a convenience store. I've heard it referred to as a mini mart, high-end mini mart. Retail, restaurant, and coffee shop. So.
Right.
And now I look in, so I'm curious, what is it exactly? I want to, for me personally, I want to know exactly what's going in there. What's, what is it? I mean, I know that's just a simple way to ask it, but that's, what is it going to be?
Well, so first of all, I would say that that's sort of getting into the meat of the CUP, which I think Mr. Wilson would probably address some of those classifications that the staff has come up with. And the applicant is prepared to explain to you exactly what their vision is for the store. But previously, the Causeway Market, as I think most everybody who's lived here for a while knows it, it's kind of a hybrid. It's kind of a convenience store, but it also had gas at one point. Obviously, we're not looking to put in a gas station. But it will be a multi-purpose, what I would consider a variety store, where you can go in and you can get food items, sundries. You can get some grocery items, health food type of things. You could grab a cup of coffee. You could come in and grab a bottle of water if you're driving around the loop. And so it serves lots of multi-purpose uses that are a little bit difficult to corner into one specific box. I think Mr. Wilson will probably discuss his choices as far as what the staff decided to label it as, notice-wise. And we can talk more about that later. If you'd like me to jump into it now, I certainly can. But I think as we progress through the CUP application, a lot of this will be fleshed out and it will make more sense.
Well, I only ask that because you mentioned that it was, you said that basically y'all were doing exactly what was already there.
Right, so it's gonna be a convenience store, variety store, retail merchandise, essentially. It'll be everything from toys to the toys, coffee, health food, groceries, power bars, drinks, Gatorade. All those kinds of things will be there. So more like a variety store because there'll be retail merchandise, like clothing and type of things. And other local businesses are gonna supply certain things, like perhaps Bumblebee's ice cream, or we can have Spoon Bud with the bakery items. And you'll see on the map where the interior layout has got some of those provisions in there. But it really is gonna be difficult to sort of corner into one specific description. I mean, a convenience store to me is like a 7-Eleven, open 24 hours a day, that kind of thing. It's not that. It's, it's gonna be directed toward more daytime activities, serving residents, serving tourists, serving people who don't want to drive all the way to Harris' Deter for milk at 10 o'clock at night.
Yeah, it's always kind of difficult to separate the text amendment from the CUP. After we've seen all the information in CUP, it's difficult for us always to try to keep them separate. Because I guess my concern is how the board members and the staff feel about, is this going to be, is this going to be good for the other C3 properties? Is this gonna bode well for the town for the other C3 properties? I understand your comment about, okay, everything's developed around this and you can't recombine lots, but some of the C3s can recombine, as you stated with parking lot at Bluewater, for example. So I'm having a little bit of trouble with that. Like, how is this gonna apply to the other C3 properties? How it will work and not work? Does anybody have concern about that, or?
You're saying combine the parking lots, of course, after the landing or later?
Well, landing's developed, but Tony said like the parking lot, excuse me, at Bluewater, I didn't look at the tax maps for that one today, but if there's a bunch of different lots in there, they could combine a few to come up with, you know, this 10,000 square feet and then.
Who else could do it, though? Is that what you're, like, who else could do it?
Yeah, I don't know for sure. Yeah, I don't know for sure. I don't know. And is that a concern for anybody else on the planning board?
It's a concern for me as to how this has a knock-on effect or a domino effect, along the lines of what you're saying, Jim. Also, along the lines of, you know, when does a, a property become undeveloped? I guess when it gets knocked down. So if we have a, a major storm or something, or, you know, God forbid, a major fire in, in a, in a certain district, and everything has to be taken down, does this go back to square one then? And, and does that allow this, this type of a text to start to be applied where it was never expected, intended, et cetera? So I, I, I don't know if what I'm saying really threads together and makes a whole cloth. But basically, as I've tried to get my mind around this, I wonder what could go wrong here, or what could be the unexpected consequences?
Well, I for one have zero concern. I don't know. I'm just raising the question. I'm trying to think of the what ifs.
Let me, let me give you a hypothetical, and I know the applicant's attorney's standing there. So I don't know if we're in board discussion or how, how you're, how you want to handle it at this juncture.
We're going to try to turn you up, Ace, because we're having a little trouble hearing. But yeah, go ahead.
Let's just take Lighthouse Beer and Wine, for example. They're on a 50 by 100 lot. We did not do a text amendment to allow their CUP to accept, to receive a favorable recommendation. Surf Berry, it's on a 50 by 100 lot. Zeeks Beans and Bowls, they're on a 55 by 65 lot. Hardy Hunt Williams is on a 33 foot by 53 foot lot. So the reason I don't have concern with this is, one, it's never come up. I'm glad it's in front of us. I understand why the applicant's attorney has made it specific to their site because they're probably have some trepidation that it wouldn't pass if the town of Wrightsville Beach thought they were opening up Pandora's Box. But this is something that's been coming up over and over again. And Sue Bullock is the one who's always championed it. To Neil's point, in the event of a major storm or fire that takes out a significant amount of structures, most of the commercial district would not be allowed, under our current ordinance, to be redeveloped. And again, that's something that Sue Bullock's been banging her drum on for 15 years. So to me, it, it, I just don't have any concerns with it for the reason that it is a, it is, it's what this town needs to be considering in the event of a catastrophic event. None of the businesses could be rebuilt under our current ordinance. So, and, and I've cited several examples of those who have received CUPs that, that really never even brought this to the town's attention. So in some ways, I applaud the applicant for doing this, and I'll yield back.
Thanks. Good answer. I agree, there is no play, no way to redevelop all this stuff. So that's, that's a good point. Any other questions for the applicant at this time? Are we ready to entertain a motion? Oh, timeout. Is there anybody in the public that wants to speak? I do have one lady in the council chamber here would like to speak. If you'd like to step up and state your name and address. Then, Robert, you don't have anybody on remotely other than Mason and Nancy Fay?
Mike Said AI A is on. No one is indicating that they want to speak.
Okay, thank you.
If, if you do want to speak and you're on the call, just unmute your microphone and speak after the person in the chambers, please.
Sorry, go right ahead. We just need your name and address.
My name is Chrissy Squire. I live at 59th Drive. I'm about four houses down from the Bevy, we have this mini mart. We own Wrightsville Manor. We're like five or six minutes up the road in Wilmington. And I'm very familiar with Michaela and her husband's businesses. They run very tight ships. They do beautiful work. And I think that what they're proposing here is exactly the kind of thing that the residents want to see. I mean, I've talked to a lot of people, you know, just, we're all really excited about it. And the ser, in simple terms, the service that it's going to provide, where you could just run up to the corner and get wine and cheese, or an ice cream, or you could go pick up milk. You don't have to be going up and down, you know, over the bridge. I think it's going to attract the kind of people that Wrightsville Beach, you know, wants to see, that the kind of people that would go in there would take, would just, I think, bring money to other businesses. They would take care of the beach when they come to visit. And I just think on the face of it, when you're driving around and you see a place like this, you're just, you know, going to want to come here and, and do other things. And I, I mean, mostly I think the residents are going to appreciate it. I know that we do. And I think, I know that a lot of people actually have kind of in their head hoped something like that would come, exactly that there. Because we kind of all just didn't want, you know, your average, kind of honestly mediocre convenience store. We wanted something higher end, something that we wouldn't have to go across the bridge for. And I think we're, we're really personally really excited about it. And I think a lot of people are. And I hope that you guys, you know, I think the future of Wrightsville Beach is moving in this direction. And, and, and these two, I know, can do it really well. I mean, probably better than most in Wrightsville Beach and Wilmington. So I think with them at the helm, y'all are in really good shape. I think it's going to be great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Anyone else? We'll close the public, public portion of the meeting for now. Do we? Is it time to entertain a motion?
Yeah, I'm for this, so I'll go ahead and make a motion that I see, accept the text amendment for 155 dot 6 dot 5 dot 5A, amending minimum lottery as presented.
Okay, David Culp has made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Oh, sorry.
Cheryl Cabala seconded. Is there any further discussion? So all in favor say aye, and we'll need to do a roll, roll call vote for Robert. So we'll start with Cheryl.
Aye.
Aye.
Jim Smith, aye.
Leanne Joyner, aye.
Karen Keen, aye.
Neil Bricky, aye.
Neil Bricky said aye.
Did, did I hear Ace?
Ace.
Oh, Ace?
Have we lost Ace?
Ace is muted.
Here I am.
Thomas Koeffer says aye.
Awesome, so, okay, so it's 7-0, Robert.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to agenda, item B, consider conditional use permit to allow for a high-end convenience dash shopping store located at 520 Causeway Drive. And again, we'll hear from Tony.
Chairman, members of the planning board, this is a conditional use permit to open up a business at 520 Causeway Drive. When the, let me first of all start getting into the, the uses there. Most of that is from the staff. When the applicant, when individuals bring a zoning verification, staff looks at it and tries to fit this in a, a certain area. When I started looking at it, we were consistent with other businesses in the past to label some businesses as, as a restaurant. If you look at our definition of a restaurant, you could fit this into that. And what I didn't want to do, and, and to mention a coffee shop, mention a retail, and the reason why I did all these uses, I didn't want someone to say, okay, Tony, they were committed as a retailer or convenience. Well, they're, they could, someone could complain they're a restaurant or coffee shop, shop. So that's why I put those things all together there, to cut down on some of the complaints, to say it, it's, these uses are okay there. So that's from the staff, not from the applicant. So staff put some of those things in there. And we were consistent with other businesses in the past to call some of these things as a restaurant. Because let's say if I didn't call it a restaurant a year or two now, if they did something a little bit, I'd have to come back in here again and, and do a restaurant use. The property address is 520 Causeway Drive. It is in the C3. Total lot size is 8,147 square feet. This request is by Harbor Island South LLC. They are the owner of the property. And Bevy Mark LLC is the tenant for this high-end convenience shopping store located at 520 Causeway Drive. This one-story building was built in 1972, and it contains 2,200, 2,300 square feet. It's currently vacant. It's been vacant for more than a year. The proposed establishment will seek, on the plans, they're showing 21 customers there. The store inside will have the following accessory units. It's going to be inside refrigeration unit, bulk storage. You'll have a bathroom inside for employees and customers. And there's a counter with seating, and there's other counting, counters with seating also. The applicant has stated the hours of operation are from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., seven days a week. And again, staff consider this as a type of restaurant there. And this request is, is consistent with the town's zoning ordinances and the Camma land use plan. These are permitted as a conditional use. If you consider the convenience market as conditional use, a coffee shop with outside seating would be a CUP, and a restaurant is a CUP, conditional use. Parking, so we base the parking on the seats for inside. So the, the establishment is required to have nine parking spaces. So you take the 21 seats, one space for every four seats, you come up with the six and one space for each two employees on the larger ship. So they can have three or four, and they would still meet those, those two spaces. There are nine standard parking spaces, one handicap space at this location. And there's not going to be any new vehicular ingress or egress proposed on the property. So we've got existing driveways there. We did reach out to our department heads, the fire, Glenn Rogers. The fire chief had no issues with the proposed project. Police Chief David Squires had no issues with the proposed project. Public Works Director just addressed trash collection there, and all of it has to meet those ordinances of trash collection. And in the future, if they need a grease trap, the public works will have to approve that grease trap. They're not planning on one, as, as I stated. Camma land use plan policies, it is consistent with the commercial development desired. Number one, the town encourages a commercial establishment, providing these basic goods for the town, visitors and town residents. And then the town encourages improvements, preservation, enhancement of the town's neighborhoods. We feel like this would be an improvement, what they're doing there. And on page 12, you have the planning board's recommendation for the project. It's based on the findings, consideration of the general requirements found in 155.4.5.4E. You see those nine, one through nine. The applicant has addressed those issues there in the packet. Landscaping and buffering, the plan is to leave as is. There are some landscaping areas out front. The applicant did say in the application they're going to work with the garden club, some of those landscaping things for low-mine areas. Existing buffering is in place. If you look at the property, there is a fence blocking the trash receptacle there. So there is some buffering there to those properties. And if you look in the middle of the page here, planning staff's recommended conditions. These one through six are typically the recommended conditions that we put on other properties. And we try to be consistent for this, for this property also. The applicant must obtain all necessary state and local permits. The applicant must comply with all town ordinances. No outside music is allowed. In the past, we've done that. All deliveries, delivery shall occur between 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. The dumping of trash bottles shall occur only between 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. This has been an issue in other areas. And number six, the property owner and the tenant shall sign affidavits conforming that they will not apply for an ABC permit to operate a private club. Public notice, the meeting ran on December the 24th, 2020, and starred news. The site was posted on December the 22nd, 2020, and a notice to adjacent property owners mailed out December the 22nd. So all the property owners within 100 feet have been notified. And so far, I have not heard anything from the property owners, day or day on that. Planning staff recommends that the planning board forward a favorable recommendation to the board of all, to approve the conditional use permit with conditions. If you want to add more conditions, we can do that, or take some amount away if you, if you don't like some of these conditions here. For the property located in 520 Causeway Drive, you have the CUP application in front of me, and I think the applicant has passed out some more information there. If you've got any questions for me, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
I have a question for Tony.
Go right ahead, Neil.
Tony, what was it in their application specifically that, that gave you the basis to declare it a restaurant? Because if I read it, it's all about a variety store or some version of selling retail goods or some, I'll call them, simple foods.
Again, one of my reasons, if you look at our definition of a restaurant, that this could be applied to this business. If the applicant is uncomfortable with that, or if the planning board wants to take that off, we can do that. But it meets the definition of our restaurant. It meets the definition of a convenience store. It meets the definition of a coffee shop. So that's why I put those in there, is to put it in there in case that we had complaints in the future. That's, is the reason why I did that. And we, we've been consistent with other coffee shops, Neil, where we, we call, even though they're a coffee shop, we have considered those a restaurant in the past. So we've been consistent the last five or six times that we've done this, is to label them as a restaurant. So if you look at the town's definition of a restaurant, this could meet it.
Are you saying that the definition of a restaurant is synonymous with the definition of a variety store, or?
No, I think, I think they're different. I think they're all three. I think if you look at their uses, you know, they got retail, they've got a coffee shop. And if you look at our definition of a restaurant, it would need that, is what I'm just saying.
Okay, I'll.
Do we have the definition of a restaurant?
But I agree. The town's definition of a restaurant is an establishment whose principal business is for the sale, comma, to customers, comma, of foods, comma, frozen dessert, or beverages, comma, and are ready to eat, say, and whose design and principal method of operation determines its classification as follows. So to me, when I look at that, is you could label that as a restaurant. If the applicant does not want that, then staff is okay with that also.
If I could interject, on, on page 15 of their, their documents, the proposed project, it doesn't outline anything in that text that I can translate into a restaurant product.
And we had that conversation with the applicant in the beginning, Neil, is what staff would be calling it. It's staff's opinion that we could call it a restaurant. Like I say, if they don't want to, and they may not want it in there. So when they get up, if they're going to take the restaurant off, that is okay.
Okay, thank you.
Question, Tony?
Question Tony. I guess I need to make this statement, I'm all in favor of trying to make this work. But I do have a lot of questions for the applicant and for you. I love the fact that they're going to, they're planning on serving coffee, it sounds like they're going to serve some food, they're going to sell some goods. Hopefully they can, people on South Harbor Island can walk their kids down there, get an ice cream cone, all that good stuff. Does the parking meet the requirement for doing all those things in that building?
I think when you look at main building, you look at what is the principal intended use. Is what how we look at things. If it's, well, let's say, for example, Johnny Mercer's pier. Okay, the or the Crystal Pier, the principal intended use area, it is a pier to the public, but we know the use there, the principal intended use is that restaurant. That's the has the most impact there. So when we looked at that, we took it, I took the seats and did the account and that, those numbers worked, that was that.
Good, thank you. On one other question, I guess we're going to have to clarify this because I was very disappointed in the application. It says they're not going to do anything to the landscaping, but now you just said they are going to.
Well, I think if you look at their inside their application, they talk about what their gardens look like. I think that's.
It doesn't say that.
Well, you gotta have this.
Well, see, that's the other thing, they just handed that out the last minute, we don't have time to do all that stuff, so we're going to have a bunch of questions, we didn't get that ahead of time. So anyway. That's my question about the landscape, so we're going to clarify that. Because this technically isn't part of the application, right?
Well, I mean, it's not a column of things, this is a CUP here. Why is that judicial way? It's not a decision that you make beforehand.
Thank you.
So there's twenty one seats where people can sit down and eat, is that my reading this right? We're seeing it's the twenty one places to sit and eat, which to me says a restaurant. Do we not do, do you have a kitchen to have a restaurant?
Well, again.
Serve food, you don't, you can just.
They have, I think there's just going to be more of a beverage, when they come up here, they can do that again. When they have the twenty one seats, they're going to be, I'm assuming you could drink coffee there, eat ice cream, prepackaged sandwich, things like that, so.
So something along the lines of like the workshop, but with stuff to buy.
Exactly, they don't they don't cook there or anything.
Yeah. Um, that was my question. I don't see anything out here about beer and wine.
It is ABC permit.
I can't read all this.
Number seven.
Okay.
They'll sell beer and wine, but will they serve beer and wine?
Well, I think that's one of the things that typically business will come back at some other time. They, again, I don't, I don't know how much comments we can have on selling beer and wine. But we get, we'll get an application, police chief won't get it, I will get it for, is it meet zoning, does it meet building requirements? So I'm they could be selling beer and wine or could be on premise, off purpose, you know, I'm not sure.
Well, there's a difference between selling beer and wine as a convenience store and serving drinks for people sitting at a seated table, yes.
Well, that's something.
And that's what I'm trying to navigate, because it says not a private club, that doesn't mean they can't sell alcohol as a restaurant.
That's exactly.
This is the same issue we had at the other end of the beach with the convenience store there that was trying to be a restaurant without selling anything but having beer and wine.
Right.
It's exactly the same thing that I've had there.
Can we do a CUP and tell them you can sell beer and wine as a retail, but not as serving a glass?
You know, from the attorneys in the past, and I'm not an attorney, we have attorneys here, but I don't think we could have that much say about it. But that's why I put in there that if they do apply for the ABC permit, it cannot be a private club. So on the conditions, that's some of the same conditions we put on other businesses. So you cannot apply for a private club.
And the differences are between an ABC permit and a private club permit?
Would be, I think the private club, you don't serve any food at all, I think. That's what I've heard.
Well, I did look at the.
But they're not serving food, they're selling food.
Well, they'll be, you could serve, I could go there and get a sandwich, I'm baking a prepackaged food.
I think what Cheryl's saying, there's not going to be, is a waitress is going to come out and bring you, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, it's a little different.
Yeah, it's very different.
It's what a DAP does and as well as.
Do they serve alcohol?
Uh, no, they don't serve, but they serve food.
Right, but alcohol is mine.
Yeah, I think I think the concern with a lot of us is going to be alcohol. And I did a lot of research on the North Carolina general statutes for ABC permits. There are oodles and noodles of types of ABC permits you can you can apply for and get. But unfortunately, Tony can say no to it and the town can say no to it. But ABC board can overrule the town. So I hope that we can get to a point where they can sell malt beverages carry out. I would be okay with that, they can sell unfortified wine and fortified wine carry out, but they cannot sell. Of course, they can't sell spirituous liquors because the only ones that could do that is ABC stores. But I think we need to limit this to they cannot serve mixed beverages containing spirituous liquors. And can't serve, you know, anybody on site, but people can carry out. And I know that would give them a lot of business if they had the opportunity to carry out beer and wine. And I don't think anybody would have any problem with that, but to have, so we need to limit them to what kind of ABC permit.
And I think that's some of the things we can do, if you choose to boot forward, you could add those conditions on there. Now, whether they're legal or not, I don't know, but I know in the past we have, that's one of the things we're protecting the town with is that private club. That affidavit, so it's been consistent in the past, that's one of the ways that we've been successful so far with that. But if you wanted to add those as conditions, we can, you know, we can put them on there and recommending conditions and see what our attorney says.
Right, because yeah, we have to remind ourselves, we're just advisory, so that's going to be up to the board of aldermen to make the final decision.
I think one of my questions for anybody that's wanting to answer as far as the applicants would be. What would you see this morphing into a year from now, three years from now, five years from now? Because a lot of things that I've seen open, I've been here for forty some years. Started out as one thing and morphed into something else, the next thing you know, which nothing, not good or bad. You know, and I'll be, I'll give you some examples. Well, I'll give you several, but I'm not going to pick on anybody, but there's a surf shop that turned into a cafe that turned into serving wine and beer to go, which actually drink in there. It morphed into other things, a coffee shop that has morphed into almost like a restaurant now, which is totally fine, so is the surf shop and the cafe. But I'm saying things start as one thing and morph into something else as time goes on. Or I go to that, my old saying, because people an inch, they take a mile, good or bad. So that would be one of the things I would want to know is is if somebody would tell me.
Again, I think that private club thing is a is a is an ace that we have. That helps out tremendously, but you're right, it's all about ownership and things can, things can happen, there's no doubt about it. Some things work very well around here with some of these businesses and I think it's just the the business plan and things like that. And and you're right, like who knows, I don't know what would happen in the next five years or two years.
And those are the things that as a as a member of the board that I look towards is what's going to happen. Start out like this and then what happens five years, a year.
The CUP can be revoked, I mean, through legal ways, so that's one way that it could happen if the if the town chooses that. You could revoke the CUP with those properties, if it's not running like the original CUP was granted for.
Jim. Hello?
Hey Jim, can we hear from the applicant just to add some more color to what?
Yeah, absolutely, I haven't, I haven't called him up yet, I think Tony's more than ready to sit down.
One question for Tony.
Yeah, we've got a couple more questions for Tony.
How easy is it, like, is the time, the operation, operational hours, is that set in stone?
It is.
If they come and say they want to be open seven to nine, for them to be open later than nine, they would have to come.
Exactly, so you see, if you if you if you don't agree with their time limit here from seven AM to nine PM, you could recommend another number here. In the past, this is pretty consistent, some of the other businesses can stay open till ten or eleven and serve drinks and things like that. So yes, you could, you could do that and this is a part of the CUP. So if they violate that, so there's not going to be any late night activities going on here past nine o'clock.
Jim, I have a question for Tony.
Okay, go, go ahead.
Tony, let's say they take some of the retail racks out of this, out of the space, so now they have more floor space for more tables. What would it take for them to be able to put more seating in there?
Well, I'd say that would change the parking requirements and technically they would have to come back through the CUP process to either get a park an exception or provide more parking on site.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, whatever we approved for this location could be approved for a couple of other locations, like the old Scotchman or that you brought up earlier.
Yeah, I mean.
David, you brought that up.
Yeah, I think if you look at that, maybe the Scotchman, probably not should be talking about, but Scotchman is maybe not meet this criteria, they may already be at ten thousand. And they, they're not adjoining other properties there, so it could, but they would have to, they have to go through the CUP process.
I mean, something completely different, but it does ring a bell with the.
Is this, would this have the possibility of, and I love this place, but would it be the possibility of turning it into like a lighthouse? Lighthouse, like the lighthouse.
Well, I think if right now, they're not showing anything outside, so.
I thought I heard outdoor seating somewhere.
The plans only show inside seating, so they would have to come back through the the CUP process if they're going to do outside seating, things like that.
Are we ready to hear from the applicant?
Oh, um, oh, one second, just to address a question earlier about the Scotchman. Because I am in my office at my desk, GIS indicates that that parcel is fifteen thousand six hundred square feet. So it wouldn't even fall under the, it wouldn't need a text amendment.
Yeah, thank you, Robert, that's great. So yeah, we're ready to hear from the applicant, thank you.
Well, first I'll say thank you, Mr. Wilson, for doing some of the heavy lifting there for me. We maybe could have avoided some of the questions if I had been able to sort of prep ahead of time and give you guys a little more time to review the packet. But I assure you, if we want to go through the whole thing, we certainly will. But it sounds to me like there are a couple of hot button issues that I just want to address to begin with, so that then we can move through the slides and get a full picture of what the applicant is proposing and how that would affect the property. First and foremost, there is no plan right now to do any on premises serving alcohol. There's actually not a plan to do any service, restaurant type service at all, there won't be waitress, everything is going to be prepackaged. The seating is there because it's available, it's not designed to be sit down, have a menu, order something. There's none of that, it's all grab and go type of thing. If someone wants to, you know, come in and sit down while someone else is shopping or, you know, doing anything like that, then that's available. But it's certainly not designed to be a gathering space where people are going to assemble and eat food and do restaurant type activities. Service of the coffee and those things are really designed to be more of a convenience to the patrons that are coming to purchase items and merchandise and groceries and those things. So the alcohol permit application is for, and I believe it says it in the application, it is, it's going to be off premises. It'll probably be malt, fortified wine, unfortified wine, off premises only, so closed container manufacturer packaging, buy and go, no consuming it on premises at all. There's no plan and there's no application for any outdoor seating at this time either. So hopefully that clears up a couple of the the hot button issues that you were asking about. So what I'd like to do at this time, if Mr. Owen can pull up the slide presentation for me, I'd like to kind of quickly go through these. I don't anticipate needing a lot of time to go through them, but I would like to just touch on a couple of points. And then if there are questions while I'm going through the slides, please feel free to interrupt me and ask me, I don't want someone to miss a question because I'm, you know, I'm not through the presentation yet. So obviously, this is for a conditional use permit, it applies only to this property, it would apply to subsequent owners if they were to sell the property. So anyone that owns that property, if the CUP was approved, would be bound by whatever conditions the board of aldermen attaches to the permit. Next slide, please. Thank you. As you know, the purpose of the CUP, as Mr. Wilson has already told you, is to provide flexibility in the zoning ordinances. CUPs are actually for permitted uses so long as certain conditions are met. And you all know the nine conditions that Mr. Wilson already addressed and we'll touch on each of those in the next couple of slides. But I think one of the most important things to know about this particular application is that the people that are going to own the store, run the store, they're members of the resident community right there, they could throw a stone and head to Bevy Mark. They are the residents and they want to improve that neighborhood, they want to fix this vacant eyesore that's there now. And they are invested in the community and providing a service that's not available in the immediate surrounding area. So they've been in the community a very long time, they care about the environment. And the purpose behind Bevy Mark is is health conscious goods, products. It's designed to be, I know we've used the term high end, which sometimes people interpret to mean expensive. But it's not really the goal, the goal is to provide products that are not available in other places that are maybe like your almond milks or your coconut milk products or some other food items that are designed for a healthier lifestyle. It's more of a niche market that it's kind of what Black Wrightsville Beach is known for. And it's that small town retail nostalgic feel that this store is trying to accomplish. Again, going back to the classification of, you know, what what box we can fit this into, I think it can fit into a number of boxes. I also think that it doesn't fit in certain boxes. It's not really a restaurant at this time because it's not a sit down service, there's no menu, there's no food prepared onsite. It is all prepackaged foods. So the concern about it morphing into something that it isn't, wouldn't necessarily fit within the parameters of the CUP as it's been proposed. But it is, it is like a variety store because there are so many different things that you can get there, you can do, you can get coffee, ice cream, toys. I mean, general merchandise, groceries, any of those kind of things, so it does kind of fit into a couple of different boxes. In your packet under section seven, you can see that the original zoning application, the applicant classified it as a variety store. But based on the staff's recommendation and their their classification of it after looking at what was being proposed. Mr. Wilson and the staff decided that it probably needed to be more encompassing and so we wouldn't get into any snags with what we're trying to do as far as serving coffee or having ice cream or having a display case with pastries from a local bakery that we're, you know, able to hand out to people, so. The applicant is okay with that characterization. The concern was only that, you know, if the health department were to come in and say, well, the town of Wrightsville Beach classified you as a restaurant and so now you need X, Y and Z because that's. and so now you need X, Y, and Z because that's how you've been classified. It's my understanding that the Health Department would make their own independent decision about whether or not the operations that were going on in the store would be classified as a restaurant, their definition versus the town of Wrightsville, Wrightsville Beach definition. And so the applicant is okay with that classification. As, as Mr. Wilson said, you know, if they want to expand what they're doing, they would have to come back and, and apply for something that's outside the scope of the CUP as, as granted. Next slide, please. I'm not going to read these to you. I'm sure you're all very familiar with what legal standards are for the CUP. And again, your experts on staff level have already determined that this application has met the requirements for the, the nine conditions that are included in your zoning ordinance. So we'll move on to the next slide, please. Now, this is just to introduce you to the people who are going to be involved. As I said, Harbor Island LLC is the property owner. Bevy Mart, which is owned by Chris Fatten and Mason Barnes, along with Michaela, and with the help of Kelly Barnes, they're all people who've been in Wrightsville Beach for a very long time. They've owned other businesses. And as you heard from the public, they have a reputation for doing very, very high end work. And they, again, work in and live in this district and, and in this area. And so their goal is to beautify and upgrade the commercial property that, that they own and make it something that is in keeping with the area and what residents want. And you can also see we have Design Elements and Environment Unlimited involved, and they have top notch reputation as professionals in the business. Next slide, please. So this is the current state of the building. As stated previously, it's the old Causeway Market. I'm sure you're all familiar with what it looks like when you drive by. It is in disrepair. It's dilapidated and it has been vacant for over a year. So it's, it's ugly. It's not helping residential property values. It's not, it's not something that, that Wrightsville Beach is, can be proud of. But the, the applicant's proposal, I think, is going to, is going to change that. Can we go to the next slide, please? Now, this isn't exactly what it will look like, but this is a rendering of what the applicant envisions that they will see and do with the building. It's going to include revitalizing the entire exterior of the building. And we'll get into more detail about what exactly is going to be done and changed with it. But as you can see, this is a much more aesthetically pleasing business establishment. It's got the landscaping in the front, we'll address in a little bit. On the right hand side, it's a little bit difficult to see, but there is the trash receptacle back there, a dumpster back there that will be screened. The whole entire roof will be replaced and a number of other things are going to be done to make this more pleasing to everyone. Yes, sir.
I do have a question. In the application, it said you weren't going to do anything to the outside and you were not going to do any landscaping. So at some point in this, assuming this moves forward and gets approved, are you willing to put that, those conditions in there that you are going to do something similar to this?
Well, I think the discrepancy there is that there's not any new requirement for landscaping areas, if that makes sense. But this piece in the front is already supposed to be landscaped, but it's just dead. And so it will be something similar to this with low lying grasses, filled in with rocks, maybe white rocks or something. So it will be maintained. We're not adding any landscape areas, if that makes sense.
Correct. I understand that, but you're going to re-landscape the area that's.
Yes, it will, it will be fixed.
And the reason I ask that is, as you admitted, it looks terrible, both the building and the landscaping. And I feel that, you know, the town wants to help make this work, but I think the applicant needs to give back to the community in doing some enhancements. You're, you're getting something for this CUP. And in return, I think that it's something simple that you can give back to the community by improving that building and improving, improving the landscaping. Because it is an eyesore. I, I don't think anybody in this room would disagree with that.
There's, there's more. There's a lot of eyesores on the beach.
Right. This is our, this is our opportunity to get one eyesore gone.
I'm fixing up all the eyesores on the beach, but that would be a start for sure.
And if you'd be working with the garden club, I'll come over there and help.
Appreciate that.
Cut your costs down.
Can we go to the next slide, please?
I think that looks great. That's awesome.
So I think everybody knows where the property is that we're talking about. You can see on the slide where the Bevy Mart is. It's right at the corner of Island Drive and Causeway, which is obviously a main thoroughfare. So it's very high visibility area. And it's right at the corner of that red, that little grid area of red C three district right there. It does have adjacent, it is adjacent to residential properties, both on the opposite side of Island Drive and then behind it. Property adjacent on what I would call the left side of your face building towards Wrightsville Beach is owned by the Wrightsville United Methodist Church. So again, it's, it's already developed and built up around. There was no, no room to expand. Next slide, please. So one of the conditions for a CUP to be approved is obviously that it has to be in conformity with the land use plan. And so I pulled a couple of snippets out of your 2019 Camel Land Use Plan that apply to this project and, and show you how this project does conform with the land use plan. Obviously, we're trying to beautify the commercial area, develop a vacant lot that has become an eyesore and enhance that, that main transportation corridor or thoroughfare through Wrightsville Beach that everybody ends up looking at as they come to and from this area. Next slide, please. Specifically, commercial mixed use, land use plan is, tries to accommodate the widest range of commercial activities possible and draw business through that major thoroughfare and fulfill the needs of the residents, daily commuters, and also short term visitors. So the proposal that we've got with the different, different things that you could do with this, this variety store, convenience mart, would eliminate the need to keep crossing over the bridge back and forth for people to run and get these small items, quick items, prepackaged food, et cetera. Next slide, please. This is already touched on by Mr. Wilson. This is sort of a snippet of your permitted and conditional uses. And as we discussed before, certain things that are going to be provided by this store would be considered permissive uses and others, such as the food store, retail grocery, and the restaurant would be conditional use. So that's again, why we're trying to cast that wide net to get the, the conditional use permit so that we're not in violation of any of the zoning conditions there. Next slide, please. There's the logo. You can see it on the front of your packet. It's got sort of a retro feel to it. It's, it's designed the same way as the building to give you that nostalgic kind of feel and re-energize the building, but in a way that's not architecturally different or too different from the surrounding area. Next slide, please. This is in your packet. It's a blow up of the survey. I only put this in there to just reemphasize that the footprint of the building itself is not going to be changed. Obviously, the entire exterior is going to be beautified, redone, but it's not an expansion of the building in any way. Next slide, please. Oh, that's, it's a beautiful view right there. I just wanted to show you that one more time. Thank you. That's perfect. So in this one, you can kind of see where the stucco is falling off the building and it's really falling apart. I don't know if you could tell from the rendering, but hopefully, the applicant intends to remove the stucco and expose that original brick, maybe paint it or whitewash it, depending on the condition of the brick once it's revealed. But in the rendering, you can sort of see that on the left hand side where it's been revitalized. Next slide, please. The applicant also intends to replace the windows and doors to something obviously upgraded, new, modern. And also, it's a little bit hard to see on this picture, but there's like a rusty line right underneath that awning. That's a fluorescent light bulb that runs the entire length of the building. The lighting is going to be completely redone. Fluorescent bulbs are coming out. It's going to be upgraded with LEDs, can lights, downward facing lights that have shielding. So it's not going to interfere with the residents that are across the street or behind. It will provide enough lighting to be safe and secure, but not be overly aggressive and bother anyone around in the neighboring areas. Next slide, please. So again, this is just a sort of checkbox list of the things that are going to be done to the outside. I think the, the rendering is, you know, a picture is worth a thousand words, right? So it's, it's easy to see the difference between what the current condition is and what we're hoping to make this building look like. Replace doors and windows. Install the bike rack. That's not actually required for the size of this building under your zoning, but it is going to be put in there because the applicant wants to make it pedestrian friendly, make it accessible to people riding the loop or passing by. Again, we talked about the landscaping. The fencing and screening for the dumpster is going to be key for those people across Island Drive, not to have to look at that dumpster. The entire roof will be replaced. It'll still be a metal roof, but it'll be brand new, so it's not rusted. And the entire parking lot is going to be restripped. The, the one handicap space will be widened a bit so that it's more accessible and easy for people to get in and out. Next slide, please. Again, that's the fruit of the future rendering, but just to point out, one, once again, there's no outdoor seating. There's no plan for outdoor seating. There's not really any room for outdoor seating. So that's not part of the application. The interior, if you look behind tab four, there's actually a blow up of the interior. I know this is a little bit difficult to read, so I provided that blow up for you. So you can kind of read what's indicated there as far as smoothie machines, coffee machines, espresso machines, those are behind what I would say is behind the counter, so to speak, on that. Right hand side, the center of the, the store will all be the packaged products. And I'll show you a picture of that in a, in a minute. The restroom has been relocated so that it is accessible to customers, but the, the refrigerator and the storage, those things are going to be closed off. So those are not accessible to the customers. That required a little bit of reconfiguration on the inside to make that work. Again, if you count the chairs in there, you can count 21 chairs. That's really an upper limit of what is possible to fit in there. There's not really a goal to stock 21 chairs or 21 people in there at any one time. It's just what is currently available with the bar space that is there. And again, occupancy is always going to be determined by the fire marshal. So we would have to comply with whatever that is when and if Bevy Mart gets to the building permitting stage, then the fire marshal will determine whether or not that is permissible.
So compared to the right, that's where, where you've got, it's like, what you do, seven chairs around a bar.
Right.
And what's that over there, you said? That's the coffee?
So, yes, so on the back wall in that little section there, that's, you've got your cash registers there. You've got smoothie machine, espresso machine, coffee machine, that kind of stuff. That's sort of projected future plan for that space.
And to the left, I'll look very opposite. Well, that's a walk-in cooler.
Right. And that's not accessible to anyone but the employees.
Employees. And what is that? What's?
Are those not doors on the front side of the cooler?
So those are coolers that are like for drinks and stuff where you access it on the front side and then it gets restocked from the back.
Okay. And I can't read from, what is underneath this? Is it?
Bulk storage, the bottom.
That is a delivery.
Delivery.
That's the delivery door around the side.
No, right.
And toilet.
I can't see that either, so that, I can't read. I can't read that part. Okay, that bulk storage is not available to any one of the employees.
Correct.
How many bathrooms?
Just the one.
And what is this wash area back here? What is that?
That's just a sink area. I believe there's, there might be a couple of different sinks in there. I have to look at my, I have to look at my blow up too.
They'd have to clean up from coffee and.
Right, right, right. That's just for employees to use for that stuff, yeah.
What is it? What is the square shape just outside the delivery door on the, outside of the building? Is that a sink of some kind?
The wash station?
Yeah.
Like Robert rinsing out trash cans.
It's existing.
Cleaning up their mops and, I mean, all the establishments have them around the beach.
That's actually an existing service sink that's been left over from the, from the last tenant. Kind of a can wash area.
And what, what percent of the, the square footage inside is to the retail versus to the, I guess, the seating? Yeah.
I don't.
What's called group M? I, I'm not sure what group M means, but that space, that seems to be where you're going to sell, sell items from.
Right. That, that, where, where it says group M, all, those are all going to be shelves that'll be installed for like the grocery store type area.
Yeah, okay. So and the square footage of that space versus to where you have seating?
I'm not sure what the square footage of that space is. I, I don't think it's been calculated specifically. It, it's a predominant amount of the area, though. I mean, it's most of the floor space.
But if you're a retail shop, wouldn't you have wanted more retail space and not sitting space?
Well, again, I mean, I think that'll be dictated by what customers want, what they end up using. The, the chairs and the benches can come out. They're, you know, that'll just depend on what, what business dictates and what the customers dictate.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, Tony, but the parking spaces, again, have been calculated for kind of the maximum probability. So in other words, if they took seats out, they did more retail, they wouldn't need more parking.
Right.
But they can't put in more seats.
Gotcha.
That's correct.
Okay.
Next slide, please. So this is kind of a mockup of that area that you were asking about as far as the center, group M labeled area where you're going to have shelving for prepackaged products. Next slide, please. These are just some of the changes that they're going to implement in the inside. We've already talked about relocating the restroom, refinishing the interior. The entire HVAC system will be replaced. Also, the interior lighting, again, will be replaced with more energy efficient lighting. The entire building plan is to be flood proofed, and there is a letter explaining that in your packet. Repair the flooring, obviously, and make sure that it's ADA compliant. Next slide. So the next two slides are basically the nine conditions that are in the zoning ordinance that need to be met. As you've already heard, your staff present that this application meets those requirements according to their expert opinion. Again, I think it's important to just emphasize that this is a preexisting building and it has operated in a similar retail store, convenience store, variety store type fashion for decades and there weren't any issues with it. So we're just re, we're sort of starting from scratch since it went vacant for a while. But it is not, the building is not changing its footprint and it's not departing substantially from what was successful there previously. Again, its focus is on a healthy coastal living lifestyle and designed to promote products that are in keeping with that lifestyle, the coastal lifestyle, healthy lifestyle. It, I mean, obviously, it's going to be maintained better than it is now because it's not been maintained at all. But I think from the rendering, you can see that it's going to be a very well-done building. It's going to enhance property values around it. It's going to be a convenience that residents want and need. The exterior and interior lighting, obviously, is going to be upgraded and improved. It'll have fresh paint, a new sign. And really, it's just, it's designed to update that commercial district and to beautify that district. And the, the owners and the tenants are fully committed to making it a product that is going to be something that people come to Wrightsville Beach to patronize. Ingress and egress, again, is the same as it was before. There are no issues with it. The police chief didn't have any issues with it. There are three entrance and exit points, one from Island Drive and two on Causeway. So plenty of ways to come in and out. It doesn't present any safety issues. And again, the, the walk-up window and the bike rack, it's designed to be pedestrian friendly, which you have a lot of pedestrians that walk around the loop and maybe would need to pop in and do something. So that's designed to sort of target that pedestrian community. Next slide, please. Could you just click through? Yeah, just click through four or five more and then go next slide. Thank you. Again, utilities, drainage, parking, those things are preexisting and they are sufficient. Ingress and egress, we talked about, that's fine. That's not a change or no changes required for that either. We talked about the land use plan and targeting these commercial areas and beautifying the commercial district. The only thing is number seven, and of course, we've already proposed a text amendment so that we can be in conformity with the other regulations. Next slide, please. And so just in summary, the benefits, it's beautifying the existing area. It provides grab and go quality products to residents and tourists. It's a small, high-end retail specialty shop. Its focus is a healthy coastal living lifestyle designed to have pedestrian-friendly patrons, bike patrons, et cetera. The whole appearance will be improved, including the parking lot. The building is not going to change its existing footprint. It's just going to be given a facelift and ingress and egress stays the same. And that is a summary of the benefits. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Question, I have a.
Leanne?
Question or concern?
By her way.
Oh, did you, was that Neil?
Go ahead, Leanne, yes, it was me, go ahead.
Um, you want to go ahead, Neil? I don't need to step on your chair. What concerns, and I keep going back to, is the alcohol sales. And the reason, I want to know how the applicants or the tenants or the owners are going to control drinking on the premises? Because it happens. A, this is a two-part question, that.
Okay.
And what is the applicant or the owner or the tenant going? I, I, I don't want to see this become a hangout and all of a sudden you try to pull in to go get a drink or get your coffee and there's a, you know, it's a hangout and then there's some drinking going on behind or on the side or in the car, you know? I mean, how do you, how, how is that going to be prevented or addressed or?
Okay, sure. So obviously, if you have an off-premises ABC permit and you allow people to take that beverage and drink it on premises, you're subjecting yourself to having that, that license revoked. And so the, the owners and the tenants have a vested interest in ensuring that they comply with that ABC permit. If there are people that are violating that, obviously, they can call the police, they can kick them out. They can not let people in that aren't actually patronizing the business. Like most other stores, you don't just get to come in and hang out. Again, the seating area inside is really more just of a convenience. It's not designed for you to come in and be waited on or come in and, you know, spend a lot of time, hang out. It's not an assembly type situation. It's a purchase your prepared products and maybe sit down for a second while someone else is shopping or you need to come in and take a rest for a second. Your kid wants to eat their ice cream, that kind of thing. It's really not designed for long-term stays. And certainly, anyone that violates the alcohol permit would be, the police would have to enforce that.
Because you mentioned earlier, you said there, there was never any issues with it, when it was the other convenience store, but they also didn't have seating and, you know, that sort of thing. So that's more to address that.
Well, I mean, obviously, the tenants are not going to jeopardize their ABC permit by allowing people to go to the cooler and buy a six-pack and then pop it open at the counter. That's just not going to happen.
Well, I mean, I know that, but I'm saying.
That's not going to be allowed.
It, it, it happens and, and I was more concerned about the house door area. Who's going to be monitoring that or enforcing it or?
Well, so if you look at the.
People busy.
Right, if you look at the layout of the building, the entire front facade is windows. And, and that's where the majority of the seats are. There's no outdoor seating there. So you're basically looking straight into the parking lot from anywhere in the store. So you'd kind of be able to monitor that. This side, there's, there's no space there at all that is immediately adjacent to another property. There's nowhere to go on that side.
I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is, and I'm trying to be fair-minded about everything, I, I look at the, the in-between area of Tower Seven and Vito's and, and that area, there's just, there's a constant gathering of people and it's loud and there's, it's, you know, people walking the loop and, you know, and, or it, it, it happens in, in front of some of the bars too, but they're, they're bars. But that area right there seems to be a very big congregation, especially in the summer, of course. What's going to prevent that from happening at this location?
Right, well, I mean, obviously, things that are going to violate other ordinances would have to be enforced by the town of Wrightsville Beach Police. So if people are congregating, obviously, the tenants would call the police to handle that. They have a vested interest in making sure that it's, it doesn't become a hindrance to their actual patrons. So the, the tenants are definitely going to be very aware of what's going on on their property and, and use all the local law enforcement that they have available to them to make sure that that's not becoming an issue.
I just have a question, this may be more directed at Tony, but if, if they decided they wanted to do outdoor seating, would they not have to come back and get permission for that? I just, I thought that was the case, I didn't know.
I've got a couple of questions if I can.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, you talked about prepackaged food. Is there any non-prepackaged food that has to be served? And, and what are they?
Well, so I guess that depends on your definition of prepackaged food. No food is going to be prepared on-site at all. There will be no food preparation at all. The plan is to have perhaps a display case with bakery items that are brought in from Spoon Fed or, or another local baker where it would just, you know, be grabbed with tongs and put in a bag and, and then you just pay for it at the register like anything else. That's not, I mean, it's not in a package technically, but it's already prepared. So it's, it's still grab and go like anything else, but that would be the extent of it.
Okay. I, you're going to have ice cream, I think, right? Gelato or something?
That depends, if you want ice cream. Of course, yes, no, there, there are coolers for ice cream, yes, but that would all be prepackaged, you know, grab and, grab and go kind of ice cream. There may.
It's pre, they're scooping out themselves. It's, it's just a totally prepackaged operation, soup to nuts?
Well, at, at the current time, the plan is to have the cooler with the prepackaged stuff in it. I, I'm not sure if that's something that could be facilitated where you would have like an, an ice cream bar or dairy bar, but that's a possibility and I believe that a dairy bar would be considered a permissive use. And so it wouldn't really be something that, that would be necessary to get details on at the CUP hearing.
Well, I'm thinking in terms of what the demand on the services of the town might be depending on what it is going in and out of the store.
It looks like.
And what kind of, and what kind of garbage is needed? So I think it is fair.
Okay.
To understand, to understand. Are the gas tanks still on that location from when it was a, a Philly station?
No, the gas tanks have been removed.
Do you plan to repave the lot?
It's going to be restripped. I'm not sure if paving is necessary. I would have to.
Will you have?
My client and ask them about that. I don't know what their intention is as far as repaving it. But the plan is to re-strike, resurface? So, okay, okay. So it'll be resurfaced and painted.
Will you have external trash cans in, in the parking area? In order to near the exit door, you know, appropriate places, near the, the walk-up window?
I believe there are trash cans on the design plan. I haven't memorized the location of every one of them. But certainly, they would be, you know, where they'd be needed to accommodate whatever trash.
The fencing on the east face, the east, I'm not sure if that's part of this property or part of the landing, but it looks atrocious. Will that be addressed in this?
I believe that the fencing will be replaced.
I wanted to just, under two issues that, or, or two items that you presented or talked to, one is the operating hours of seven to nine, which seems reasonable for the type of a store and the type of location, neighborhood. And also that the ABC permitting, not only including the, you know, not going for a club type ABC, but also only off-premises permits for malt beverages, fortified and unfortified wines. That's all I had, thank you.
Okay, I would just like to mention one thing briefly. I know the application said 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. That was sort of a best guess kind of application numbers to put in there. I do think that it would be appropriate to allow some seasonal variation in that time to accommodate summer tourists when it doesn't even get dark until 9:00 PM, perhaps extending it to 10:00 PM. The applicant is willing to work with the board and come up with hours that are amenable to everyone, but that wasn't, I mean, those hours weren't put in there as a strict, non-flexible timeframe. They were sort of a guide based on what they thought they would need to do.
I recommend you ask what you want.
Ace would hear you.
Makes it so you recommend you ask what you want.
Yeah, because.
Yeah, you, you did, we do need to talk about what you want because and I think the board is probably, I'd like to see you open earlier for coffee, maybe in the summertime or something, you're a little seasonal. But if you ask for the extreme, then you can always shrink the hours, but you can't expand them. So you should, we should get that in there now.
Right, I, I mean, this is sort of a last minute thought on, on my part. So I would need to definitely ask my client what, what they would be willing to commit to or what they would, best case scenario, hope for. If you give me just a couple of seconds, I could refer with them about it.
I actually have one question, this pertains to noise. Do you plan on having a generator?
I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, I just think for your freezers, but, and, and I only ask because of the noise. If it's a diesel generator, they're very, very noisy, as you know, but. And I'm only asking that in respect to the neighbors that are right there.
Right, at this stage, I don't think every finite detail has been thought all the way through just because it's not required for the application portion of it.
Okay. If there aren't any more questions right now for the applicant, we can always ask them going forward, but we do need to ask if there's anyone in the public that would care to speak in favor or not in favor? It appears there are none. Robert, do you have anybody online?
Um, I mean, Mason and Mike are still on, but no one, no one's indicating that they want to speak.
Okay, so we'll close the public portion of the meeting and open it up, discussion among the board members.
I have one more question for the applicant.
Okay.
Ace, we can't hear you, hon.
Yeah, we can't hear you, hon. That's at least.
Ace, I can hear you, I can tell them that they can't hear you.
About now?
No.
No.
It's like the wrong microphone is operating.
Is that better?
Some more.
A little bit.
Anyhow, what is, on that, this is a question for the applicant. Are they going to have, are they going to go through the Health Department or the Department of Agriculture?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of your question.
Are you guys going through the Health Department?
Or what specifically?
In regards to the goods and services that you'll provide, will you need a Health Department, you know, rating or not?
I don't believe so. I think it would be Department of Agriculture.
Okay, thank you, that was my only question.
Okay, as far as the hours go, I just want to let you know the best case scenario, the applicant would request 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, knowing that probably that extended time period would be seasonal, not necessarily all the time, but ask for what you want, right?
Right, I would ask, while we're on that subject, would you be willing to shorten that on Sunday evening?
Sure, I think the applicant would be willing to work with that.
Just like. Oh, absolutely, come forward, yeah, yeah. But please state your name because folks in the other, that are remote can't see who you are.
Kristen and Kayla may want to speak to you guys too. But I'm Kelly Barnes and I'm here on behalf of my son, Mason, and I'm, I've been helping him get this role. And we have these amazing partners, or Mason has amazing partners. But Mason is traveling, he travels all over the world. He's born and raised every year on Harbor Island. And the idea of this came up from him, traveling, surfing, he's a pro surfer. And he wants to eventually come back here on Harbor Island where he was raised, where we had an amazing life of him growing up. He's now 27, he's starting to think about being a man and bringing a family back here. And this is where he wants to set root. We, he is one of the healthiest people I know on the face of this earth. And he has mentored so many kids on this beach and trained them and helped them perceive a healthy lifestyle and what it takes to do that. So I think when, and I raised him over here on Lindy Lane, like, sorry. My daughters, I'm getting choked up because we had an amazing life here and I'm proud that he wants to come back and, and raise his family and beautify the beach. I raised him and my daughter, Lindy, who's named after Lindy Lane, over here on Harbor Island for all of Mason's life. And Lindy is 17 now. And I was part of the garden club for many, many, many years. I helped with the beautification of Harbor Island and Wrightsville Beach. Durwood was by my side constantly. He was the one that got started over here. So we want to, the garden club to continue to be part of the community that we're helping to bring together. So when you talk about congregation of people, that's the kind of people that I think about. I don't think about people being up there hanging out, doing bad things like you do see in some of the areas, which those are picnic tables. They kind of bring it all in. We're not going to have that. I may at some point want a bench for a person to sit down, tie their shoe or something out there. I don't want to, I'm not trying to say that we're not ever going to have any kind of. I'm not trying to say that we're not ever gonna have any kind of place for them to rest or take a break or drink their water, but we're not having dining tables or outdoor seating at all. We did put all the seating in there because, oh, I forgot. Thank you, Tony. So Tony's been very, very helpful.
I don't know if it's.
But, um, so this being our first time of doing this, the the town planning thing, Tony's been very helpful. But we we did go for the gusto with it and we did, and I have Mike Say who has also lived on Harbor Island, Ritzville Beach his whole life. His, his, um, his family raised him here. And so we all have very strong feelings towards what we want here and how we want to bring it back to life and make it nice again. So, um, but we did put all the seating in there and we are gonna have more retail. There's not gonna be as much seats in there that we're gonna, we, the whole thing is we're trying to appease the community. It's not, I mean, it is about us making a profit, but it's about us appeasing the community. And when I lived over there, I, the guy would carry almond milk for me because Mason's gluten-free and lactose intolerant. So we want that kind of lifestyle to be able to be lived and you just jump over there and get whatever you need. So, and we're also gonna have kids toys and gifts. If you're going to a party and you need, you forgot to bring something, we'll have candles you can pick up or a little box. Michaela's really good at that and marketing and stuff like that. So, and then there's Chris and he, Chris is, um, several coffee shops and other retail stores. So they they make a great team and they know what they have to do to make this work. And we're all very clean perfectionist people. Mason is one of the worst, you know, he's OCD about everything. That's the only kid I know that gets up and makes his bed every morning. But so, but in that one right there, we talk about trash, there will not ever be trash on the sidewalk or anything like that. So, um, if you guys have any questions, we're open to answer them, Marty.
Thank you very much.
That's my second question as well. Be sure to see about it. Michaela, we live, Chris and I live on Jasmine Lane and we have for years. So we have two boys. And when we say there won't be people gathering, if they were gathering, it would be in our backyard at this point. So, I mean, we are dedicated in that aspect to keep it a, you know, not only a family, but just a neighborhood feel. I mean, if people were congregating, drinking beer, it would be in my backyard at this point. And that's my five-year-old son, my one-year-old boy who's running around playing football, right? So there's that. Also, I mean, I think there is a very clear vision. So a lot of what we've presented is all over the place for a lot of people who are here for the first time and getting a big package and saying, what is all of this information, right? So Chris and I have owned numerous businesses, sold businesses. We have clear visions. We go into either the shoe store, I went into it to sell shoes. Someone would say, why don't you sell dresses and cute pants? Well, I opened a shoe store to fill a niche market, which was shoes, and that's what I succeeded with. And then, you know, Chris, he has a coffee shop currently and and people will say, well, why don't you throw a kitchen in there? Get a grease trap, throw a kitchen in, it'll be easy. Right? No, because his lane is what he does. So with this, we have a very clear vision, although it is a broad vision, it's very clear. And I think the standards that we've already set off of that are enough to show not only you guys, but also the community that the standards that we're bringing to the island, Ritzville Beach has a standard. It does. And I think that it's very important to keep that standard through not only our business, but just the way we conduct business and the way that we, you know, we interact with the community. And I was gonna make one comment about the seating. So, you know, in business, it's always about that turnover rate, which is true with a restaurant as well. You have tables and you want those tables to turn over, right? So we don't want people to come and grab a water and grab a sandwich and just sit and talk. I mean, we're not there to build relationships. We are there to do that 100%, but we're there to sell product, to sell retail, to sell sandwiches, to sell coffees, to sell water. So we want as many people in and out of that door as possible in a day. So as far as the seating, like it's been said a million times, it really is for convenience. It's not for, we want to get people together, sit and have an afternoon together. I mean, we'd love for you to come get all of your supplies and go have your afternoon at the house, but we are not trying to host it anymore. So again, questions, of course, but I just wanted to chime in a little bit. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I I do have one question for, was it Michaela?
Yes.
That was just speaking. Will you sell Styrofoam coolers with cases of beer?
You mean as a package? I don't foresee us selling any.
No, 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 not as a package, but I mean, you know, so many people stopping by a case of beer headed to the beach and they bring the Styrofoam cooler. The Styrofoam cooler doesn't make the trip home. It breaks.
I was just gonna say, I mean, I think that it's a, yeah, and it's pretty well stated. I mean, we are very much a wellness, health, mind-conscious type business. So I don't think you'll find Styrofoam anywhere in the store, you know, as far as that reduced freeze, recycle, that type of thing. I mean, I think that there's already a lot of things we've thought about. How can we beautify? How can we come together and do, hey, let's start a fun group in the summer of locals who maybe, you know, you do want to congregate and have fun. So let's go do it at the beach and do a beach sweep. Let's do a cleanup. Let's promote that kind of positive, you know, for the people who are in the neighborhood because you go to your neighbor and say, hey, let's beautify our beach. I can't imagine someone right now saying, nah, I'm not really into that. I'd rather go to the beach, go to Styrofoam. So I think that hopefully that answered that. I don't see that foresee that being, I mean, and I don't really think we're ever going to promote selling cases of of beer. I mean, if you want to take it to your house, that's great. That's your own business, but that's not, we're not promoting it to go to the beach and have a, you know, why don't you have a bonfire right out there too? You know, it's just not, it's not Ritzville Beach, so.
Thank you.
Of course.
I have a question.
Leanne has a question.
And anybody can answer this. I just want to make sure I'm understanding the applicants, the owners and the tenants. The business is going to be owned by, you're the owner or the tenant?
I'm the tenant.
You're the tenant. And Mason is the tenant as well. And who is the owner? Who owns the building?
No. Harbor Island LLC owns the property and then Bevimar LLC will be the tenant, which is owned by Chris and Mason.
And who owns Harbor Island South?
Reggie Barnes.
Reggie.
Of the business.
Yes. So you, you guys are the tenants owning the business, you, you two and Mason, Reggie owns the building. Who is responsible for rehabbing this building?
The tenants are rehabbing the building.
Your, your guys are in charge of rehabbing?
Yes.
So you guys are gonna rent from Reggie, right?
Yes.
But you're responsible for the building getting beautified, for the beautification of the building. Because where I'm going with this is there are other properties on the beach that are not attractive at all. And I don't want to see that happen. I'm being very honest here and that's a very, on top of the alcohol being a concern for me. The seating, I'm not as concerned about as I was in the beginning, but I'm concerned about the alcohol sales that I want to, I mean, you know, whatever. And I'm concerned about the building staying nice and fixed up if you're gonna fix it up and it's staying nice and not becoming dilapidated or an eyesore. I mean, it's an eyesore now, but you're telling me you're gonna fix it and telling all of us you're gonna fix it. And I believe that and I think that looks lovely and and all of that, but I just don't want to see it become like some of the other properties.
Right. I think, I think the answer to that is that this is a family-owned business. And so that cooperative effort is there and that relationship is there between the actual owner and the tenant where normally you might have two completely separate entities that that pass the buck or don't cooperate, don't figure that out. But because this is sort of all one family that's both owning it and operating it, I think that you're gonna have cooperation there. That's not gonna be an issue.
But to your point, Leanne, for Tony to be able to enforce what you're requesting, we need to make sure we put those conditions in these conditions and I believe.
That's what I'm working in my head.
Yeah, I believe what we need to do next is talk with the applicant about how they will agree to put those conditions in this so we can make a motion. Because I believe I've heard you say that the, you're willing to accept as one of the conditions, the rendering for the landscaping and the building facade that we will be similar to what we're seeing now. And if they will agree to that, I think those two aspects are covered for your concern. And then Tony will, as a UDO, will have to rely on that, assuming the board approves all this. We'll have to rely on that for the condition to issue the.
Well, whose responsibility is it to upkeep the building and make sure it looks nice? Is it the tenant or is it the owner?
It ultimately is the owner.
Well, and I'm saying there's other properties on the beach that have not been kept up and do not look nice and are an eyesore for the island.
If I can speak to that, because I'm.
Anybody, I don't care.
I'm right in the middle of it. It's mom and Reggie's ex-wife. So, um, I kind of am in the middle of it and I know, but so this is Mason's future livelihood. Mason is the future of Ritzville Beach. I mean, whether you want to think about it or not, I don't want to have to think about it. And he will inherit this, all of that. Mason wants Ritzville Beach to look like that that you see. We don't want to put Bevimar on anything that looks bad. This is his brand that he's building. He hopes to go national with it, maybe worldwide. We already have someone in Nashville wanting to pick it up. So this is there, we don't want Bevimar to be on anything that looks bad at all. We want it to look like that or better, you know? And to speak to the beautification part of landscaping, we, I think Tony and I were just talking about that we didn't, we couldn't change it a lot because of the, for the view of pulling out from the road and being able to see both ways and stuff. So that's all we were saying is we weren't gonna change it a lot. We would fix it up and make it better and it would probably have to be something that can be dry, like ornamental grasses and rock and low-lying things so that you can see both ways when you pull out. But, you know, we definitely want to beautify and continue it on and hopefully this will be the beginning of progress and you'll see change down the road.
And if I can make a quick comment too, I mean, neither here nor there, but as far as longevity is concerned, like you said, it is our responsibility. So this is speaking to us as far as keeping it up. And Mason as well, of course, but I mean, you know, just the history, you have to go by history, right? I mean, Chris and I have both owned five-plus year businesses that have maintained, been sold to different owners. I mean, we have maintained the longevity of our businesses. So I mean, just to speak to that, I mean, there is history with us proving to the fact that we're committed to this business. This is our business. We commit to keep it the way we're saying we're keeping it. And there is history there to look back if you choose to do so. So if that's a concern, I mean, I, you know, definitely please look into that if that is a concern.
Yeah, I don't think it's a concern with me personally, but the applicant has to understand that we have to protect the town in that you could go away. You know, you're, you're not committing to running this business for 10 years. You could sell the property. So we have to remember that whatever we approve runs with the land, not with the applicant. So just please understand that as we go through this. We're not, like I said earlier, I want to see this happen. So me personally, so I think we're trying to figure out ways to to make it work.
But I also want to clarify that I'm not saying what my point was, and that's why I was asking, was it the tenant or the owner? I'm not saying that I don't think that you guys want to keep your property. I'm just thinking that in the past, owners of property down here have not kept their properties up and, and, and that's why I was asking. I'm like you, I want to see this happen too, because I'm tired of going across the bridge when I just, when I need something. You know, I'm, I'm off, I'm really actually off for it. The alcohol concerns me. But, you know, I think we can address all that in the conditions and but I just wanted to be clear, clear about.
You're clear that the alcohol is off-site.
Yes, I am. Oh, yeah. Very much so.
So I would suggest, make a suggestion so we can put that issue to bed, that if the applicant would agree that they're only going to apply for a packaged, I don't know what the exact ABC permit is, but if we could word it as such that they're only going to sell packaged malt beverages, it's defined in ABC, and then also the, they're, they would be selling fortified and unfortified wine for, for carryout purposes and I.
Can we do that and be legal about it?
I'm not sure if I could just, I mean, I'm not 100% sure because I haven't researched the issue, but I believe that there is an issue with trying to regulate a state permit, regulating an applicant to, you know, restrict a state permit. I think it would be superseded at least in some cases. I'm not sure that that would be an issue necessarily, but it's something that we could look into and perhaps address at the Board of Alderman meeting or.
I was gonna suggest that. Could we all agree to send it to the Board of Alderman that way? And then they, they would have, the town attorney would be sitting there at that meeting and they can hash it out. Because we really, again, as Ace always reminds us, we're advisory only, so if we say something that can't legally be binding, then the town attorney will opine to that at their meeting. So if everybody's in agreement with that, if we could put that in there and see if it flies.
I absolutely agree with it.
Pardon me?
I absolutely agree with that.
Thank you.
I do.
Okay, all right. So that's.
I'd like to be able to go in there and sit down and drink a beer personally.
Hey, we just had it done. Now you want to go directly?
Move off the beach. Now you start talking like that.
You've already said no outdoor seating, no onsite alcohol sales, spirit of liquor sales, no gas sales ever again. I'm sure environmentally it'd be.
Just one add about the outdoor seating. She did mention a possibility of a bench or something.
Well, I was gonna suggest that to Kelly. In fact, before she brought it up, I think you ought to put a bench and you need to put it on. You need to ask for it now.
Yeah, put it on your drawing. You don't have to put it.
I put one right there by the takeout. And if your takeout's not ready, you can sit there or you can tie your shoe. Is there a way to on Sunday, no deliveries or no trash pickup? And I'm just thinking about noise for the neighbors. Is that a condition you would accept?
I don't think much of that happens on Sunday.
I was thinking, again, the noise, you know, people on a Sunday in that house, you know, is right, right there. There's three or four neighbors right there. You said no onsite cooking. You're gonna commit to that because then you'd have to put in a grease trap and a hood and fire suppression, all that stuff.
External trash cans?
They said there's trash cans on the site plan, but I couldn't find them.
Yeah, there's, it's all night. Oh, the big dumpster.
There's a dumpster there.
Yeah, okay, smaller trash.
Yeah, like if you.
By the door.
Buy the wrapped up sandwich and you're walking out and you throw the wrapper away. So.
Well, they definitely have trash bins for wrappers.
So are there trash cans on the site plan or? There's none on there. Can you put, how many do you think, Neil? Two?
I would think that size lot, that size parking area and the walk-up business and the bike racks, I'd say at least two, if not three, but I'm not a, I'm not an expert on that.
One on either side. You have it in or by the door or.
And Kenny, it is, well, but it is trash.
I'm saying a number of trash cans is good, but tell them where to place them.
Well, the other heartburn I have is when we did the Roberts parking lot at CUP, we made them put in four trash cans. Well, the next day we went out there and there's four of the cheapest rubber-made trash cans you could ever find and they blow away every little bit of wind we get. So if we get something substantial, yeah.
I mean, we probably would end up doing something cool and kind of retro, like the stainless ones or something like that. Again, everything we do is to be good to our brand. We want it to look good so that someone else might want to replicate it down the road in another town. The lifestyle, yeah.
Jim, I do want to go back to this bench because it kind of went back quickly. I don't know. I mean, the first I was thinking no bench, but I do see one bench, just like you said, by the takeout window, because one bench. because one bench turns into two benches, turns into three, you next thing you got outdoor seating. I, I, I would like to specify if everybody would agree or did it disagree, whatever, one bench. If you're going to add it in, because they said, you know, just add it in now, but-
And then they'd have to come back if they wanted to add something.
More than one.
So, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna clarify how long?
You know, say, I mean, I see someone being by the takeout window, why are you waiting?
I think you ought to specify that.
Well, yeah, specify how many-
Or just six foot long bench?
Yeah, standard bench, but, but one. What we'll do to trash cans, now I'm-
Well, trash is important, though, I mean, it's just, it just is everywhere.
But they run you over with the bike rack, I saw you smile.
Yes, that was on the plan, thank you for the bike racks. And then you wanted to change the hours of operation from six to 10, except we would limit it on Sunday night.
Well, in the summertime, we were thinking, you know, it doesn't get dark till nine.
Right.
We weren't here to cater to the neighbors, so you're not out, you might be out there barbecuing like we were talking about at nine o'clock at night, and you might need ketchup or whatever. We want to be able to be there for the neighbors. So, it's not like we're trying to be open late night and sell beer. We want to be there to make our neighbors happy, who are customers happy and have good customer service.
Oh, I think we're good with-
Yeah, I think we're open to extending that. Like Ace said, if you ask for six to 10, and then you don't want to stay open that late, you don't stay open that late, but I think we also-
I mean, if it's not, if it's dead, obviously we're not going to keep paying somebody to be there.
Right, right. And then can we put our standard, I don't think it works, but our standard noise recommendation, that if they get three noise complaints or something?
We can, we've done that before.
We always put that in all these things. If you get complaints from the neighbors three times, I don't know what the noise would be, but in this case, but, because-
I think that would be cited, that they have to be cited for it, not-
Right, you have to be ticketed, which is impossible. Is there anything else that y'all want to nail them with? Oh, tell Mason no skateboarding onsite.
Well, he says he doesn't skate that much, because he can't hurt, or he can't hurt.
Gotcha.
This may be a moot point, but it's, from the rendition, it didn't seem like there would be sufficient bike racks if it's a successful venture, because it looks like it's got a fantastic location for bikes to, to get to and be able to park it. There's nothing like it on the island, except maybe, you know, down by the oceanic, but, so I, I could see a lot of bikes attracted there.
We expect more walking traffic because there aren't any bikes on the loop, really, there's more walking people. Most moms, Michaela walks the loop, she, and she would probably stop in there for a snack or a little bribery before she walked the loop with the kids in the stroller and say, if you're good in the stroller, I'll get you. I will say school, though, after school may cause bikes. Yeah, yeah, after school, the kids always, my kids went to the market every time, every day after school. So, yeah, we will, I mean, if there's space to put an extra bike rack, then we would like to be able to do that if we needed to.
So, Robert, did you get down the the conditions that we added?
Can you go over it a second? Just go, because everybody was talking.
Tony's got the notes, okay.
Can we go over them again, because people were talking and I was, you know?
Yeah, in addition-
Just, I want to go down the street.
Okay, in addition to what staff recommendation conditions are, we have added no gas sales, no outdoor seating, no onsite cooking, Sunday, no delivery or trash pickup. However, we're going to word the no sale of spirituous liquors, mixed drinks, or, you know, serving of that onsite. However, we're going to word that.
Well, I, I think, I'd like to say, we'll check with our attorneys if we can do it. What, one of the conditions would be, would be they have to apply for off-site premise, permit only.
Right.
And then we'd see if he's okay with that.
Okay. And then we're going to add our standard noise violation verbiage in there.
Two trash cans.
Two trash cans, and then-
One six foot bench. Should we say that out?
And I didn't say the six foot.
I know. David started.
I did not, I was not the one that said six foot. I said one bench, I just want that.
Well, David wants to put in there no outsor, no outdoor seating, except one six foot bench. And then the extension of the time of opening from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., with the exception on Sunday, you would close at six, did we say, or eight? But-
We didn't say that.
I'd say the latest possible. I mean, if the, if the community knows that we're closing early on Sunday, then that's great, but I would say latest pop, because that's when families gather and actually cook. I mean, I go to my parents and cook out every Sunday.
Was the board okay with leaving it six to 10, seven days? Okay.
Knowing the location of it and everything.
Okay. And I think that was it. Oh, well, I'd back up. The landscaping and architectural improvements are going to be similar to the rendering. And the landscaping, of course, has to be compliant with the site issues at the intersection.
Depends on how much digging you want to do.
How many what?
How much digging you want to do.
You volunteered, I heard.
I'll do it if it's going to help make the beach look nice, I'll do it.
Similar advice to the, to the Board of Alderman is going to be, as far as the alcohol sales, I hate to keep going back to this, but I am, because we're kind of leaving it, because we don't know if we can, if the legality is behind that. So, are we going to make sure that Board of Alderman understand that we see this, we understand it, but it has to, we're sending it to them, because the attorney will be at the meeting.
Well, for clarity, there are three codes for, of, of many, many codes for the A B C that all deal with off premises sale for malt beverages, fortified and unfortified wines, and the codes are A K, A M, and A O. So, if you want to use those as a reference, not, you know, not that the town attorney research it himself.
I just, yeah, I know what you're saying, Neil, and I just want the Board of Alderman, because, you know, we've had all these discussions about how it's presented to the Board of Alderman from us, that we understand that we were, we were adamant about the alcohol sales, but we didn't know how to do it until we get the legality side of it.
Well, to, to satisfy your concern, and I, I understand it, I would, after we're done here, I would, you know, email the Alderman and ask him to watch this meeting.
Yeah.
I know one of them-
I don't know if we can discuss it with the order of the system.
No, we can't discuss it, but we could just say, please watch the meeting. We're not discussing it.
Well, our recommendation will be as written. It's not a legal binding, so we'll state in our recommendation that we limit, and if that, they'll know that, because it'll be in our recommended recommendation, right?
Exactly.
Because it's not a legal binding document.
Right, it's just a recommendation. Okay, so, anyone want to take a stab at a motion?
If you give me your notes, I'll do it.
I can't stop that long.
If you give me your notes, I'll do the-
Well, all they are is simple check marks and-
Because I didn't, mine aren't written down as neatly as yours.
Okay, how about? Tony will, Tony will catch you if you missed anything.
I'm a C U P, so I'm, I'll make a motion to approve. I'm trying to look for the number.
Probably have to go to the agenda. Or they, you go to the-
There it is.
Agenda, yeah.
So, I'll make a motion to approve a conditional use permit to open a standard restaurant, retail coffee shop located at 520 Causeway Drive with the following conditions.
And you have to read the ones that the staff also entered.
The applicant must obtain all necessary state and local permits. The applicant must comply with all town ordinance, no outside music is allowed. All delivery shall occur, occur 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
With the exception of Sunday.
Except, except Sundays. The dumping of trash and bottles shall, shall occur only between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m.
With the exception of Sunday.
With the exception of Sunday. The property owner and tenant shall sign affidavits confirming that they will not apply for an A B C permit to operate as a private club. We will add the following conditions, no gas, no gas sales, arch improvements.
Architectural.
Okay, architectures, I can see it, I just abbreviated, architectural purpose. No outdoor seating, no onsite cooking, Sundays, no deliveries, no trash pickup.
Okay.
No onsite alcohol sales, standard noise ordinance, seasonal variation in times, opening six to 10.
And the top one, landscaping.
Landscaping.
Improvements. And what was that?
The bench.
The bench.
And the bench.
Infamously, Anne, no more bench.
One bench.
Okay, so there's a motion made by Leanne. Tony, was it complete?
Yeah, I think the only thing is, is we added the noise complaint, right?
Yeah.
We got that on there.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I think that's it then. So, this, that's looked like it's like with my notes, so, yeah.
Okay, so there's a motion by Leanne. Is there a second? David seconded, and it sounds like there's further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Just to be clear, did you include the statement about not filing for an A B C permit as a club?
Yes.
Yes, she read that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? So, if we could have a roll call vote, starting with Cheryl again?
Cheryl Kabala, aye.
David Karp, aye.
Jim Smith, aye.
Leanne Joyner, aye.
Karen King, aye.
Neil Brighi, aye.
Thomas Kofer, aye.
Great, thank you. Good luck with it.
Yeah, good luck.
I did have one suggestion for you, I didn't want to say during the meeting. I don't know if you can reanalyze your site, but it looks to me like you might be able to reposition that handicap space and some of the things, and maybe in compact spaces and get maybe another space in there, parking space. Anything to help your business? Because we need to, we need, we need commercial space on this, for sure, so, yeah, good luck with it at the board, hope it goes well.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys.
Do you want these back so you can give them to the board?
No, we don't want them.
No?
Sure, thank you.
Yeah.
We will recycle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next item, is there any old business from anyone, chairperson, board members, staff? Any new business, old business?
The only comment I have is, what, what we'll do is, there were some questions about notification of property owners. Typically, they get notified, especially the Board of Alder, maybe two weeks before they actually get the packet, package out. So, what I may start doing is to to say, hey, this is going to come up, the packet will be ready. That way, you'll, you'll know in your head, okay, this is going to happen in this area. So, once, I'll, I'll start trying to do that a little bit earlier. The packet won't go out any earlier, but the the notification of if it's a tax amendment or a C U P, things like that, so.
That would be much appreciated.
Once I did something, I'll start doing that, yes.
Yeah, because sometimes we start getting people asking us about something and I-
And that's because they have to be notified. I can notify them up to 20 days before you get the packet, so. The main thing for me is I like to be out there and out front notified, if there's a property owner, like, real quick, so.
Well, in this instance, the folks who are going to be the operators, of course, they live in South Harbor Island, which is a very close knit community, and I know, I have some friends over there, and they started asking me about, oh, isn't this going to be great, isn't it going to be great? And I said, well, it sounds great to me, but I don't know anything about it.
They already knew more about it than, you know, than we knew until we got here. Right.
Right.
Because they, they knew about this whole time, I knew about it. But a lot of time, things can change.
Right.
Before you know it, someone could come in at the last minute and go, Tony, I want to change the site plan, or I want to add this, and it happens all the time. Or someone could come in and say, we're going to pull it, and it just throws everything over.
Yeah, well, Robert did a good explanation, emailed back to us when Leanne asked that question, so, yeah, we understand it changes, changes at the last minute. The other thing is, I wish we could stop this from happening, where these people throw all this information at us at the last minute.
This was so much more informative. I was looking at this, not even-
Yeah, so it-
Right. I mean, I was, I got a lot more information in it.
And sometimes, this is how things happen. Individuals come to me, go, Tony, I want to open my business up. And next thing you know, here it is, the wintertime, and they need to open, and they never meet the deadlines to bring me the material. Most of the time, it's a week or two before the meetings, and then things change, so. You know, we may have something coming up soon where the individuals haven't gotten the all the information, so. And that happens all the time.
Are you allowed to make a comment about tonight's meeting, though, about-
It's all, you're still on-
Okay. Okay, that's what I, okay, so we adjourn.
I do have one quick question. Do you know of anything coming up for the next meeting yet, or, I know you don't?
I haven't received anything. I've heard some rumors, and y'all may have heard, hearing rumors, but I, I haven't not received anything, and I don't want to say anything, because I have-
Yeah, okay.
And y'all may be hearing more than I am, so I don't know.
But that'll be helpful if you can let us know as soon as you know that it, even if it may be on the agenda, we can at least start thinking about it and go see the site and all that good stuff.
Okay.
And then sadly, David and Ace will not be back next month. I hate that.
Me too.
Well, Leanne, and I'm like, no, if they don't-
Cheryl, we might be able to sit out there. We don't get back in.
I just want to say that I think y'all have done an excellent job with what you've done. You've done your planning, which is better than some of the boards have done in the past, so I, I've enjoyed working with you, and I'm sure Ace has too. It's always good having Ace on there, because he has a different look, being in the business into this, so.
You both bring a very grounded-
Yes.
-deep point, and we appreciate it.
You made me feel welcome from the get-go when you brought me that notebook and made me feel like I would, I would learn some things, because I didn't think I was.
I think you can do this all your life and still learn, learn stuff, that's for sure.
Well, I'm still- Ace, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
We're going to miss you, darling.
Oh, I'm going to miss you guys too.
Yeah, but we can, we can still ask you advice, right?
Oh, yeah.
Don't you remember from the training session?
As long as it's not regarding a C U P.
I want to ask you anything about C U P.
Well, I should hope y'all get the visit with the Alderman sometime.
Well, I kind of given, have given up on that one, I just don't understand, but. Try to keep the time. So, we're all sitting here crying, Ace. We have tears in our eyes. Okay, well, do we have a motion to adjourn then?
Take care, Ace.
Bye, Ace.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
David, motion, Leanne seconded, all in favor, say aye. All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Take care, David.
All right.
All right, Leanne, what was your-